Here we go, guys. You watching? Welcome, everybody. Let's see. Good evening. Welcome to the September 9th, 2019 meeting of the Board of Selectmen. The meeting is being recorded for cable television. Please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start the agenda, I'd like to have a moment of silence. Brian Ambrefei passed away. He was a very important member of the community. He was here for decades. He was our pharmacist at Village Pharmacy. He was a friend of mine, a friend of probably many people in the room and people listening. So I thought it'd be appropriate that we have a moment of silence on his honor. Okay? Thank you. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is the application for change of officers and directors for the Whole Foods Market at 427 Walnut. Is there someone here on behalf of Whole Foods? Could you come up to the podium and just introduce yourself? And do you have a quick explanation of what we're doing?
Sure.
Thank you.
There you go. Okay. Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Whole Foods is here. I'm Dave Liberdoni from Dunham, McLean, and Fish. With me is Kevin Kacambres from Whole Foods. Whole Foods is here tonight requesting to change its officers on its existing Section 15 package store license at its location right in this complex here. This is really just corporate housekeeping that Whole Foods is doing on its part. It's Whole Foods CFO Keith Manbeck will be taking over some of the officer positions for the licensee and for some of the other corporate entities that we need to disclose as part of the Section 15 license. There's, you know, some individuals who were previously approved on Whole Foods' existing license and also now disclosing some of the officers for Whole Foods Market, Inc., which is no longer publicly traded but is now wholly owned by Amazon, as we know. So this is just, again, corporate housekeeping, trying to get the license to meet all applicable requirements.
Great. Well, we've gone through this process before with, I think, also with Whole Foods and with other entities here. So I don't see a problem with that. I just want to make sure everybody realizes that the package store license you have is a beer and wine license, not a full package store license.
That's correct.
That's come up in the past.
Yep.
So I don't have any questions. I think it is just a housekeeping formality. Take a motion if you would like.
I move that the board vote to approve the application of Whole Foods, Inc., doing business at Whole Foods Market for a change of offices, directors on its all alcohol annual restaurant.
That should be beer and wine. That's my error.
I apologize. Should be beer and wine.
I'll take that as my error.
He was getting smiley for a minute.
Beer and wine license. Thank you, Bob.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. While they're signing, there was an announcement that Trudy asked me to make. The town clerk, Trudy Reed, has asked that we inform the public that the last day to register to vote for the September 26th special town meeting is Monday, September 16th. The town clerk's office will be open from 8:00 to 8:00 on that day. Anyone new to town or never registered and interested in voting at the meeting must register by September 16th. One must attend to vote. State law does not allow absentee voting for town meetings. Thank you. Next, Rob, could you take the podium and then introduce our new candidate for treasurer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my privilege to offer for your consideration tonight Leslie A. Davidson for the position of treasurer collector for the town of Lynnfield. I first, that's right on cue.
Was that a raspberry?
That must be Marblehead. I first would be remiss to not recognize our card treasurer and tax collector Christina Sullivan, who announced recently that she is retiring from her position after 31 years of distinguished service to the town of Lynnfield. She will be retiring on Halloween. And I want to publicly, on behalf of her coworkers and colleagues in the board and all citizens, to thank her for incredible service.
Absolutely.
Julie McCarthy, our town accountant, and I put out a request to seek applications for the position of treasurer. In 2020, it's not an easy position to fill. As someone once told me, no one wakes up as a young man or a young woman and says, "I'd like to be a tax collector." But thank God, some do. And we received 14 excellent candidates for this position. And we interviewed four exemplary candidates. But one stood out amongst the outstanding candidates to a point where we felt unanimously that we would offer Leslie Davidson to this Board of Selectmen for your approval, and one candidate only. Leslie has a degree in Business Administration from Endicott College and received her certificate in continuing studies in financial studies from Babson College. She rose through the ranks in the town of Wenham, serving as the assistant treasurer collector, the treasurer collector, and for a period of time, the finance director, the treasurer, and the collector. The holy trinity of finance.
Yeah, that's right.
Most recently, she has served with distinction as a treasurer collector in the town of Marblehead. She is very excited and speaks so highly of this community. And it is a pleasure to offer her name for your consideration. She is an exemplary candidate. Julie and I know a lot of people in finance. We searched from the Berkshires to the Cape for someone to say something that wasn't incredible about Leslie. We could not find a person. So I'm so excited with your approval to make her an addition to this great team that we have here in Lynnfield.
Great. Thank you, Rob. And welcome, Leslie.
Thank you. Thank you.
I appreciate it. I really look forward to meeting you today. So I've heard a lot about you over the last couple of weeks. And it's all been exemplary. And I can't believe that we got you from Marblehead. So I appreciate it. And I'm not going to pep you with questions because I think Rob and Julie have done all that. And they've done a great job in the screening process. And to bring you forward, I believe that, you know, that's the right choice for the town. So I'll pass it along to my coworkers here.
Well, I do have about 10 questions, Bill. No, I just want to say Christina Sullivan, I would like to congratulate her on her retirement. And Rob, you said it nicely about her tenure for the town of Lynnfield. Those are big shoes to fill. From talking with Rob, though, understanding your experience in Marblehead and the experience you bring, this is an exciting time for the town of Lynnfield. They're going to continue the great work in that position.
I definitely look forward to it.
I look forward to working with you on that. Anything I can do to support you, please let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have questions either. And I'd just like to say that, you know, from what Rob has told me, what Julie has told me, and other people in Town Hall who dealt with you professionally, they really are excited about the idea of you coming on board. So I think without any further delay, we should have a motion on her appointment.
Please.
I move that the board vote to appoint Leslie Davidson as the town's treasurer and tax collector and pre-tax plan administrator, with the starting date to be determined by town administrator Robert Dolan.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Leslie, welcome aboard.
Thank you so much. I look forward to that opportunity.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Look forward to it. Yeah. Rob, when's our start date?
It's going to be at the, we're going to have a two-week overlap.
Yeah.
So mid-October, we're hoping.
Yeah. Great. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is application for a livery license for Boston First Limo Service at 375 Broadway. Good evening. Just push the base of the mic so it turns it on. There you go. Introduce yourself.
I'm in a Monir. I run a livery license. I used to in Boston area. Just moved in 375 Broadway. And I would like to change the address with Masport. And they asked me for a license from town that I'm okay if I can park in where I live. And I spoke with the ladies in office, and they give me a letter. And I submitted to the Mr. Selector.
Yeah, we have the letter allowing you to park there.
Yeah, just I'd like to get a letter or license to show to Masport. Then I would like to update my address up to date as well. Sure. Sure.
Any questions from the board?
No.
No? We'll take a motion then, please.
I move that the board vote to approve the annual livery license application of Boston First Limo Service for one vehicle at 350 Broadway.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Good luck with it. Thank you. Thank you. Next, I'd like to have Peg Saliday and Carmella Dalton come up to the podium and talk about a couple of things we have coming up and a very exciting grant that the town was awarded that Peg has worked very hard on, so.
You want me to go first?
You want to talk about the grant first? Go ahead.
Sure. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, Mr. Dolan, for having us here again for a Healthy Lynnfield update. I'm very pleased to announce that this past month we received notice from the Federal Government Bureau of Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, SAMSA for short, through the Center for Substance Abuse Prevention that the town of Lynnfield is receiving a very competitive grant. I believe there are only four en masse. I need to double-check that. They just released the other communities that were funded today. The federal grant is slated to fund substance use prevention for youth ages nine through 20 in the town. The grant is worth $275,000 a year with the opportunity to renew for up to five years. So Lynnfield residents, our partners that work with our coalition, A Healthy Lynnfield, our town departments that have been working together over the past year should be very, very proud that we were able to competitively apply and receive this funding to continue substance use prevention work in the community. I am super excited about it. I'm like really excited. So for the public, the two main goals of the grant are to prevent the onset and reduce the progression of substance use and related problems while strengthening prevention capacity and infrastructure at the community level. That means continuing to build partnerships, working on policies and programs and pieces that will be sustained in the community after the funding is gone. And then to address behavioral health disparities amongst populations and encourage strategies that decrease the differences in access service and outcomes of populations served. So we all know that youth are a population that are disproportionately served when it comes to substance use. So again, that's the two primary pieces that we will focus on with this grant. What it means for the town in our programs is we will be able to fund curriculum at the schools. We will be able to continue to work with law enforcement on the enforcement of underage drinking and other drug use in the community, continue to work with our partners in public health and public safety, and encourage members across the community. There'll be pieces for parents, parenting programs that we will be able to build in. And we continue to hope to build our youth leadership program. So it's quite a lot. It's quite an extensive grant. There's a value, a very rigorous evaluation component built in, which is a good thing because it ensures that we stay on track for achieving long-term outcomes in the community, which is always, I think, a very important piece not to lose sight of when you're doing community work. So I am happy to take any questions about the grant. But we're very, very pleased. You'll be hearing lots more as we get up and running. The grant starts officially at the end of September, October 1st, for all intensive purposes for the federal fiscal year, starting October 1st. And we'll have lots to put in place for then, so.
That's great, Peg.
Great.
Really, job well done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Again, I like to credit the community for working with me in the past year for the work that's been done. Because without that, you can't be competitive in your application for these kinds of funds. It's really a huge thing for a community the size of Lynnfield to receive that grant. So thank you. But we do have some other exciting things coming up, and especially this month. I think on our website, I will just point you to our annual community report. If you are not familiar and you want to take a look at what we've done as a partnership over the past year. And in here is a list of upcoming events we have for October, including being at the Senior Center for their health fair, doing a film screening for parents on the theme of adolescent anxiety with the school. It's an indie film showing that's coming up on October 3rd. We will be doing some more mental health first aid training with our clergy. And most importantly, this month, in September, we have the Night of Hope Walk that we are very proudly partnering with the Think of Michael Foundation. And I'm going to let Mrs. Dalton talk about that as the president of the Think of Michael Foundation.
Thank you. This year, A Healthy Lynnfield and the Think of Michael Foundation are sponsoring Lynnfield's first Night of Hope. It'll be held Sunday, September 22nd at 6:00 PM. This is not a fundraiser. A Night of Hope is a community gathering showing support for those impacted by substance abuse. We will convene at the Lynnfield Middle School, where walkers will receive a purple T-shirt. The color purple symbolizes recovery, and September is National Recovery Month. We will then start to walk to the Carmen Passing Center Farm, which the Migliaros have allowed us to decorate their home in purple. And also the Kimball's home on Main Street will be decorated in purple. We thank both families for their support. The Carmen will be decorated in purple. There will be purple lights in the center congregational church windows, the meeting house, the library, and Town Hall. Purple bows will be hung on all the doors of these buildings. Thanks to Reverend Nancy Rotman and Rob Dolan and their volunteers. Also, all of our schools will have purple ribbons on their front doors. Once the walkers arrive at the Carmen, they will receive a purple votive. They will also be given a star to be hung on the Carmen with a person's name or a special message from the walker, representing hope for all those in recovery or those who have died due to addiction. When someone you love becomes a memory, the memory becomes a treasure. Let's continue to hold on to the special treasures of those who have succumbed to this insidious disease. But now, let's give hope, love, and support to those in recovery trying to overcome these demons and erase the stigma that's attached with addiction. Our guest speaker is Alex Costa, who grew up in Lynnfield. He attended the Lynnfield Public Schools and graduated Lynnfield High in 2010. He is currently the director of marketing at Allure Detox. The event will end with the lighting, ceremony, and blessing. Please join us on September 22nd, and thank you.
Thank you, Carmella.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Did you mention that September was National Recovery Month?
September is National Recovery Month. So across the country, communities nationwide are doing some event to recognize the hope, that there is hope to recover from substance use. And that's, you know, we together invite the community to come. Just by being there, you are showing support for a really difficult issue. It helps break down the stigma. And it's really just a way to gather as a community and be present to say, "We acknowledge this, and we support people in their journey." So really, really important. The other thing, we just want to let the community know, if it does rain, which it won't, come out anyway because we have plans to be in the Center Street Church. So I don't want anybody thinking if there's light raindrops, don't come. Come, we'll move it inside to Center Street Church. I want the community to know that. So good. Thank you. Excellent.
I just, quickly, I'd like to, I know you spoke a lot about hope and love in the community of Lynnfield. And being a public school administrator, I understand the social, emotional challenges in the classroom and in the schools. Seeing what Think of Michael has done and A Healthy Lynnfield has done, I mean, I'm confident to say that we're at the forefront in Massachusetts, in the state. The fact that I don't feel you're very aggressive and put together A Healthy Lynnfield and put together a volunteer base, that I don't think if we had that, we wouldn't be looking at a quarter of a million dollars a year. And I think that's just amazing, absolutely outstanding for a town of 11,000. And Mrs. Dalton, the work you're doing with that organization has touched so many people already. And certainly, I will remember Michael. And we thank you and Mr. Dalton for all the work you've done. Thank you.
Can I question mention Colin, the mental health services?
The interface?
I, that's what you call, no, no. It's Colin, the people that need services.
Yeah, that's interface. It's called interface.
It's called.
Yeah. Yeah. Do you want to just?
I'm happy to. It's, I'll defer to the board.
If you could just touch on it briefly, just to announce.
Sure. We, I'm full of updates. We have so much going on. We just launched in August, you may have seen in the paper, a service that's available to any Lynnfield resident. So very important to know that anybody can access it. Working with the town and A Healthy Lynnfield through a separate grant that we got this year from the North Shore, oh my gosh, I'm blanking. North Shore Community Health Network, thank you. We are able to fund a helpline through William James College. And basically, it's a service that helps you match a professional mental health counselor if you are looking for services. So the whole idea is you can call the helpline. If you're not sure what kind of help you need, they'll walk you through. They'll do an intake. They'll ask about your health insurance. They'll ask about your availability. And they do all the legwork. They make phone calls and find a clinician whose appointment schedule is actually open and can see you within two weeks. If any of you have tried to find behavioral health care, it can be quite daunting going through that process. If you're a family that is, you know, overwhelmed with stress or family issues or have kids that are experiencing behavior management. It's for seniors, addresses issues of isolation, depression. It can really take the legwork away from having to make all of those phone calls. So it's a very helpful service. I do have cards here at the table for the community. The website of the town has the information number. Please take a look at the information. I'm happy to come out and talk to any community group, any local organization or board about how to access that service. And I want to thank the town for your investment in making this available to all residents in collaboration with A Healthy Lynnfield. Really good partnership for something that's really, really important.
Great. Thank you, Phil.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And thank you, Carmella. Thank you very much. Well, the next item on the agenda is the opening of the Fall Town Meeting Warrant.
I move that the board open the Fall Town Meeting Warrant for submissions of articles and vote. Set the date of closing of the Fall Town Meeting Warrant to be set for Thursday, September 26th, 2019, at 6:00 PM.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is the memorandum of understanding with the Lynnfield Police Association. Mr. Dolan.
Thank you. I'd first like to thank the Lynnfield Police Association for an excellent negotiation. The focus was not only on the compensation, safety of the police officers, but also the citizens as a whole. The Lynnfield Police Association is an excellent group of officers. We have reached agreement, the union has, association has ratified a three-year contract with a salary increase of 1.5% each of the three years and adjustments to the educational incentive program that focuses on a better-trained officer. I ask for your approval.
Thank you, Rob. Appreciate it. And I appreciate all the hard work you've been doing on this. I know it's a little different than probably what you did before. We have them all come up at once, and you get bummed out with these. But I think you're doing a great job, and I appreciate it. Any questions from the board?
No.
No? I'll take a motion then, please.
I move that the board vote to approve the memorandum of understanding between the town and the Lynnfield Police Association, Local 414 AFL-CIO, for a collective bargaining agreement to commence on July 1st, 2019 and conclude on June 30th, 2022.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. While we're signing, Rob, could you go over the MOU for the Lynnfield Department of Public Works?
Sure. The Member for the Lynnfield Public Works, they have postponed their vote to this Thursday. So our hope is that will be ready for approval at the second meeting of September. What we are ready for a vote on is the contract between the town of Lynnfield and Lynnfield School Custodians and bus drivers. Again, I'd like to thank the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees for an excellent collective bargaining session that again was not only focused on employees but on our students. We have reached agreement, and it has been ratified by the custodians and the bus drivers on a three-year deal of 1.5% per year each of the three years and addresses religious holidays on days in which the schools are closed. I ask for your approval.
Thank you, Rob. Again, great job on that. And honestly, a great job on the mandate we set at the beginning of the year to keep the increases yearly at the 1.5. We've done that because the new growth in town has slowed down significantly after market REIT's been absorbed by our budget. So we had asked... So, we had asked our town administrator not to go above the 1.5 on the collective bargaining agreements. So, again, I'll take a motion to accept that.
I move that the board vote to approve the collective bargaining agreement and contract between the town and the Linfield School Custodians and Bus Drivers, Council 93, Local 3434, American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees for a collective bargaining agreement to commence on July 1, 2019, and conclude on June 30, 2022.
Second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Three copies. And Rob, the next, the appointment of Sealer Waits and Measures?
We ask for your permanent appointment of James Collins as the Sealer Waits and Measures. He currently is a temporary, serves temporarily in that appointment while we waited the legislature and the governor to sign special legislation to take that position out of civil service. Mr. Collins is currently the Seal of Waits and Measures in the City of Peabody. On his own time, he works with us. Our local building inspector, Joe O'Callahan, said that Mr. Collins has done an outstanding job, and he wishes for him to be appointed permanently.
Great. Any questions from the board?
Nope.
No? I'll take a motion there, please.
I move that the board vote to appoint James Collins as Sealer of Waits and Measures.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Rob, could you go over your town administrator report with any updates, please?
Sure. I'll be quick. Our next meeting under department heads, quarterly reports, next meeting we'll have the DPW prepared to do a full presentation on our fields projects. In terms of the community compact, last week, we had our first emergency management, management group meeting that now consists of the superintendent of schools, myself, the two chiefs. DPW head, as well as our health director, as well as two water districts. That group will be working over the next several months to complete our MEMA emergency plan that has not been formally and fully updated since the 1990s, and that group will be working hard. And that will be a permanent structured group that will address all potential emergency management issues in the town. The Rail Trail Clubhouse, we have a RFP going out in the next week regarding a permanent structure for the King Rail. We feel strongly that we have, the group that has been studying this, we have a responsible pragmatic plan with funding to create a structure that will support this golf course, enhance business, particularly outings, and group as well as clubs. The Fields and Parks Renovation Projects, this Tuesday evening, we'll be meeting with the Youth Soccer Board of Directors regarding a partnership between the town and youth soccer on the Jordan Park Project that we hope to present to town meeting in October. We also have had a final meeting regarding the wait route plan at Linfield High School that has been given the thumbs up by our high school principal and athletic department. We will also be presenting that at town meeting in October. If you'd like to preview, myself and the chairman, we'll be meeting with the school committee on October 1st to get final approval regarding that project. The School Enrollment Capacity Exploration Committee has an RFP, which is a request for proposal regarding space options for the Huckleberry Hill and the Summer Street School. And we have, as of yesterday, 14 architectural firms that are interested in this work. So, we'll be having a design review committee to choose the best firm to look at a potential challenge with increased population this year at Huckleberry Hill. Again, we'll be providing an update to the school committee on October 1st, myself and the chairman of that committee, Mr. Shenna. The Complete Streets Program, we now have, we will be asking for a little bit of money for final design at town meeting, and October 1st, we will be presenting again to the school committee formal plans and timelines for Phase 1 of the Complete Streets Program, which consists of pedestrian safety increases for the Summer Street School, the Huckleberry Hill School, Chestnut, and Main at the middle school, as well as reconfiguration of the Main Street South Common Road intersection, which is highly dangerous, as we all know, for pedestrian improvements. Thank you.
See, that was a big win for the town to get those funds to fix up the town center. That'll be nice once we get that going. Appreciate it. Thank you. Next item is the closing of the Special Town Meeting Warrant. I'll take a motion, please.
I move that the board vote to close the September 26, 2019 warrant and include in the warrant one article submitted by petition.
Second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And now, we've come to the time that most people are here for is to discuss the warrant article. I believe Mr. Curly is going to come up and present the warrant out to the board, please. Thank you.
Chairman, I'm going to just recuse myself, my sibling Gina, she lives within the vicinity of the rail trail.
Sure. Thanks, Chris. Propose rail trail. Thank you.
I've got printouts of a slide deck that I'm going to use in tonight's presentation. I should have enough copies. Let me just.
Sure, sure. He's, yeah, he's recusing himself. Yeah, yeah.
Unfortunately, due to, first off, my name is Patrick Curly of 26 Locksley Road. I apologize for my voice tonight. Mother Nature brought on a really tough cold already this year. Unfortunately, due to technical reasons, it appears that the PowerPoint presentation that I had prepared tonight on behalf of the Friends of Linfield Rail Trail is not going to work with the technology that we have here tonight. So, we'll just work off the slide deck and bear with me. So, I'm here to present on this article for the Special Town Meeting Warrant, and the Special Town Meeting will occur on September 26 at 7:00 p.m. The warrant language, I think all of you have seen before, in essence, is seeking to raise or seeking to spend $348,000 of town funds to move the rail trail forward to the final design and permitting end of this process. We're seeking the Board of Selectmen's endorsement of this rail trail article to move forward with the final design. Now, in terms of those costs, the final design, the quote that we received from World Tech, at least Bill Mertz of World Tech, has said that it was $695,000, one half of that being Linfield's share, and that's where we came up with the $348,000 figure for this rail trail warrant article. Now, why do we seek town funds? Well, for a number of reasons. First of all, the Mass Department of Transportation, which controls the construction monies that are set aside for this trail, has indicated and confirmed that the towns benefiting from these trails invest some money into it. There's some element of investment on the design side of us. The Mass DOT pays construction, but the towns come up with some money for design. And by contributing some money towards design, it shows our readiness factor in terms of Mass DOT moving forward with construction and the date on which that would commence. The state does not pay for all design costs. I've got this straight from Emily Granoff, the district director at Senator Jason Lewis's office. Also, this ensures if we vote to grant these monies and pay these monies for the final design, it ensures that Linfield can gain access to the $100,000 Department of Conservation and Recreation Grant that the Friends of Linfield Rail Trail were able to be awarded. We won that process. That grant expires July 1 of 2020. That's according to town administrator, Rob Dolan, and that date's going to be here well sooner than a year from now. Now, this raises a question. Won't the state pay for the final design costs? There was a 2018 environmental bond bill, and our state senators and representatives were successful in getting earmark under that bill for $500,000 for final design funds for Wakefield and Linfield Rail Trail. It sounded wonderful in principle, and it was great that they were able to get this. But in practice, there's very little hope that we would ever see those funds from the state. And I get that directly in part from our senators' offices, and I'll go through the source for where we come up with that information in a moment. But one thing I want to note is even if the state came up with $500,000, if you divide it in two, that's $250,000 per town. That's not enough to pay for the final design cost for Linfield. We'd still be short about $100,000, and would have to go back yet again for another vote in the town. I encourage that the Board of Selectmen cannot rely upon the state funds ever materializing from the state. Now, when the earmark was granted back in August of 2018, Selectmen Dalton stated, just because the money is there doesn't mean it will be expended. And those were very prescient, wise words. As it turns out, there is no guarantee the state will release the funds at any point during the five-year term. That term carries from 2018 to 2023. According to the chief of staff of Senator Creighton's office, that bond bill's authorized for five years, meaning the governor could choose to fund the $500,000 or some portion of it at any point, or he could choose to fund none of it. It's solely up to the administration's discretion at this point in the process. And in fact, according to Senator Jason Lewis's office, over 90% of earmarks in the bond bill will go unfunded over the five-year term. So, of all those earmarks that are out there, including the money set aside for rail trail design with Linfield and Wakefield, 90% of those will never get funded. Those talent or those entities waiting for earmarks will be waiting five years with nothing at the end of the line. And even Selectmen Crawford noted in an email that he had spoken with Brad Jones today as of this email, this money is part of a five-year bond bill, and there's no guarantee that it will be funded next year. That's absolutely true. In fact, there's no guarantee it will be funded at any time. The reason we've got to move forwards today is we don't want to risk the $100,000 DCR grant. This is a huge grant. It's a reimbursement-style grant, though. If the money's not spent on the final design by July 1, 2020, we lose the $100,000, and they'll give it to some other town that's ready to go forwards. It's a very coveted grant. It's highly competitive, and we won that for the town. And it's likely to be the sole money available for this project from the state. Another thing that would be at risk if we don't go forwards with the final design now is that inflation costs. Over the course of time, as the town could be waiting to see if the state comes up with money, certainly the cost of the final design will also increase with inflation. Now, we could quibble about what rate of inflation. I've listed 5% inflation rate each year on Linfield's share of the design would balloon to a $445,000 design fee by 2023, so another $100,000 increase in costs by delay. Now, by moving forwards and proceeding with the final design now, we can also potentially advance the trail construction date. The Mass DOT delayed the town's construction from 2021 to 2022, all the way back to 2023, '24 because of Linfield's lack of readiness. And the source for that is Chaparranaga, the Mass DOT project manager on this project. It's possible that the stip construction date could be advanced if we proceed forward with final design now. Now, why is this a good investment for Linfield? So, we've got final design costs of $348,000. That advances this project to construction-ready status. The MBTA rail trail corridor, as you know, costs us nothing. MBTA is prepared to give that to the town. The value of that corridor could be as much as $6 million. That's what the town of Natick paid for their railway from a private railway owner. We get 100% of the construction costs, which right now are at $10.3 million, but those will increase to accommodate the increase in costs when the trail actually starts construction. So, for an investment of $348,000, we end up with a trail value of about $16 million. An investment, again, of $348,000 unlocks $10 million plus of construction costs, and the finance committee in town noted, that's a 3% investment getting a massive return, 30 to 1 return, or more than 30 to 1. We've got a mandate by Linfield voters. The voters voted for a rail trail back in the 2017 town meeting and also in the 2019 town election that the Selectmen had put a non-binding question on. Delay means another generation loses out on a rail trail, and this is a big deal to voters that I've spoken to. They want this trail, they've waited a long time, they want it now. They're tired of more and more votes and questions. They want to resolve it, and we can do that through the Special Town Meeting. This would also send clear evidence of readiness, loud and clear, to the Mass Department of Transportation. And it's financially prudent. It avoids losing a $100,000 DCR grant, and it avoids the risk of additional design costs from inflation. So, we welcome your endorsement, and I encourage you to join some of your esteemed colleagues who sit on the finance committee, on the planning board, on the recreational path committee. Those esteemed boards and committees have put in dozens, if not hundreds, of hours of time on analysis and hearings and research regarding this rail trail. And most recently, the finance committee voted by an 8 to 2 margin on August 19 to endorse approving this Special Town Meeting Warrant article. They endorsed that by a large majority. The planning board voted unanimously on March 27 to recommend the Wakefield-Linfield Rail Trail project. They've assessed this from every angle. They agree. The recreational path committee, which you have appointed and which has answered the questions that you have put before them, has also voted unanimously back on March 18 to recommend to the Board of Selectmen to move forward with the design phase so that Linfield residents can see the complete engineering documents. I encourage you to endorse this article, and I ask you, is there any other information that you would need from me to get to a yes on that endorsement tonight?
Well, I appreciate it, Pat. Thank you very much. I do have a question for you. On the $100,000 grant that we received, which I appreciate the friends working on that, is there any reason, if it expired, that we couldn't reapply for it and get it awarded again?
So, my understanding is that we would have the right to try to reapply, but there'd be absolutely no guarantee that we would be awarded the grant. In fact, if I was sitting at the DCR and considering grant proposals, I think we would be at some risk of prejudice since we had already applied and taken no action to actually use it. It's a reimbursement-style grant. The towns understand how it works, and for those towns that really want to move forwards and get a project done, they move forwards with it. So, I wouldn't suggest to voters, and I certainly wouldn't suggest to the Board of Selectmen, that delay is a wise option because we might get that money later.
Right. I understand.
Nothing at this point. I'm going to reserve comment until I hear a public comment.
Sure. Thank you. Any questions from the audience for Mr. Curly? Wayne?
Why?
Why don't you come up to the podium? The millions of people at home want to hear this question.
Why are you having a special meeting in September, which will cost the town $7,000 to put on, when you can put this warrant into the October meeting?
Well, that was a request of the friends. They got the required signatures, so we are obligated to have the meeting. Now, if they want to come up and answer why they're doing it now, they can certainly.
Yeah, I'd like to know why.
Pat, you want to come up and answer that?
Did you forget about the October meeting, perhaps?
So, the Friends of Linfield Rail Trail thought about the options and decided in talking with constituents and voters in town that there was a strong desire for a Special Town Meeting focused on a single issue, and that is why this was brought as a citizen's petition article for a Special Town Meeting. Our understanding from town officials is that there was already a budget for Special Town Meeting at the town clerk's office. So, it's not my understanding that we're adding to some budget item that was not already there. And so, we brought this as a Special Town Meeting Warrant, and there was an extraordinary response from voters. We had more than 300 people sign the warrant article petition. We had to turn away voters in the heart of, and that was in the midst of an August, you know, vacation period. So, there's a lot of So there's a lot of desire in this town to move forward with this right away.
Another question, Wayne?
So it is your belief that the money for this is in the budget, and therefore it's okay to spend it? You were at the town meeting previously, a couple of years ago, and explained, the moderator explained, that if we have to have another meeting because we're running towards the end, you know how it happens, that it cost the town $7,000. Maybe you missed that. Maybe you didn't. But that's spending money, not budget money. Our tax money. I'm getting a blank look. I guess you don't know about this.
Well, I don't want to come in and knock you off the podium. If you're done speaking, I'm happy to come speak. When you're finished, if you step aside, I can come back and speak. It's hard to know when you're done. Okay. So the answer is, again, there's a budget line item, as far as I understand from Trudy Reed at the clerk's office. And so this is standard process of democracy in our town. We have exercised our right as citizens to move for a special town meeting. I'm proud of that exercise. I'm proud we live in a town where democracy prevails. And we're moving forwards with the town meeting on September 26th. I appreciate the Board of Selectmen setting the date and the time. And we look forward to having the voters speak to the issue.
Thank you, Pat. Thank you, Wayne. Vince?
So not to Vince Inglees, 23 Huckleberry Road, not to belabor the point on the why the special town meeting, but just to tell you quickly, we did work with Trudy Reed back and forth. It was October, better than September. And actually, what she indicated to us is that by holding a separate town meeting, that was likely to lead to a lower cost in the format that we had offered to do it, and that was with a private ballot. So our understanding is that you're... That you've decided to have the electronic clicker. So our point was that, you know, we thought it was prudent to treat this initiative, this project, in a special town meeting so that more people could show up as a one-article town meeting. But, you know, essentially, and Patrick, I think you did a very nice job in stressing the key points, we truly believe that this is the prudent move. All the advisors that we have worked with at the various state agencies believe this is the correct move to go forward now. You know, to be a Selectman nowadays is not easy. Not everybody's looking to do that. This is a contentious topic, as it is in most towns. But as we know, that once these projects are completed, they're treasured assets. We believe, the two of you, it's time to step forward and do what's right in this situation, to not roll the dice on what is considered to be a very low probability of success. There's 100% probability in losing this DCR grant. So the question is, you know, we've been after the Board of Selectmen for well over a year to, in the words of Richard Dalton two and a half years ago, "Look at the process." And we've asked you, "What is that process? Will you put it in writing?" And the answer was no. In our opinion, that's not a best management practice by any means. We feel that it would be important to know, you know, what are the issues that you have so that all stakeholders involved could look at this and help advise you rather than holding your cards to your chest and at the end making a decision that might not be prudent. So again, I want to echo what Patrick had asked is, you know, are there any other issues besides this potential to get this money dropped on our lap? Are there any other issues that would give you pause to move forward?
Well, Vince, we're gonna... What I'd like to do is let's have everybody come up and speak to the subject, and then we'll make our comments at the end.
See, normally what happens is people will get up, and you'll give your patented answer. What about a little dialogue for the public? What other issues, if any, are on your mind about advancing this project? Besides the potential for this money to be dropped on our lap?
I will bring any issues I have at the end of this when everybody's spoken first.
So you don't want to have dialogue?
I'll say what I want to say at the end.
Okay. Is that... Is that pre... That you have that prepared already? You said answer?
No, I'm going to wait to listen to everybody speak, and then I'll tell you my answers. I think that's the prudent way to do it.
Okay. Okay. Well, again, thank you for your time. And again, we are looking forward to you two stepping forward and doing what we believe is the prudent choice, and that is to advance this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vince. Sure.
Hi. Jim Girasi, 20 Westover Drive. So Wayne, you know, you've heard a lot of smokescreen when you ask your question. I'm going to actually answer your question. The answer to the question is, a special town meeting means that the seniors won't show up as much as they would, others won't show up as much, and it gives the pro... And the pro-rail trail people can pack the audience, and so they have a better chance of passing. So that is not the answer you would have heard from them. Oh, I know that, but I wanted to state it. Everybody gets it, all right? So all of the other stuff was just, you know, whatever. I haven't been in Linfield that long, but boy. All right. So my other question, the special... I think I already heard this, Phil, is the special town meeting was... It's by mandate. The Board of Selectmen had no...
You don't have a choice.
You don't have a choice. So just by the petitions, they had to have that?
Correct.
Understood. Thank you. All right. And so my other question was the two-thirds. You know, there's a rule around getting money, and Linfield requires two-thirds of the town to vote on it. And this one, just by taking money that's already been appropriated, is a simple majority.
Correct.
So that, too, is also... I mean, that... Okay. It's in the rules. It's in the bylaws. But it's a complete violation of the spirit of what we're talking about here. And just to go over the facts, in April, in the April town meeting in 2017, the town meeting vote was 342 to 341. During the town election, 47... A full 47% of the people in Linfield voted against. 52 voted for, 1% didn't vote. 47% voted against, and that was termed earlier a mandate. 52% is not a mandate. It's a slim majority. Meaning 47% of the people before... And I'll just also remind you that at that time, the same people who just came up here and told you that we need $348,000 said, "No, this is going to be free to the town." Free to the town. Only $8,000 a year. Well, that's, you know, doing the math in my head here, that's probably something like 40 years of what they said it was going to cost all in one lump sum, $348,000, taken from schools, police, fire. Are you kidding me? All right. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you.
Steve Sorrentino, Reservey Lane, Litfield. Well, one of the issues, too, that I had is that when we did... When that vote did come before the town as to whether or not to allow the town, the Selectmen, to continue to look into this and to move forward with it, you know, the money was never mentioned, the additional funding. So, you know, I mean, I take issue with that as well. I wonder if that were on the ballot as part of the question, whether or not you would have had the overwhelming vote. Anyways, so aside from that, you know, I take exception to taking money out of town funds for something that I would consider to be more of a luxury item, if you will. And in speaking before the FINCOM, when this came before them, I raised the question, or I raised the issues around the existing town budget, both from an operational standpoint and from a capital budget standpoint. We all know we're at break even. I look back at some of the commentary from fiscal '19, and, you know, Mr. Crawford said, you know, "2.5% property tax increase each year just covers the increase of education costs." Mr. Dalton says, "It doesn't bode well for the future. If you look back over the past four or five years, we have a marked trend of declining surpluses, and we are just about break even in this particular budget." Mr. Dolan went on to say, "Manage..." You know, "What does this budget mean? We manage costs, manage debt, and stay ahead of proposed crisis." So when I look at, you know, $348,000 coming out of the budget, and I know it's earmarked, there's money in there earmarked from sale of property and free cash, and I get all of that, but it's still taxpayer money coming out of the funds. I looked at the capital budget. The capital budget, there was about a $3 million request from all of the heads, if you're the department heads, chief of police, chief of fire, superintendent. And out of that $3 million, less than $1 million was approved or recommended by FINCOM. So we left deficits in, you know, our highway in particular, $1,003,000, I think, was requested, $200,000 work on whether it was streets or the drainage issues I know that we have. But, you know, we... A mere $200,000 out of $1,003,000 request. Fire, I know the chief wants a new fire truck and so forth and so on. I realize I have to speak to Mr. Dolan that those things we can borrow for, but, you know, why are we going back into debt? Or why would we want to go back into debt or float more bonds? When I think about the way in which FINCOM came to the conclusion that this $348,000 was an investment and that there would be a return on the investment, it was considered, I think, the way I read it, was it was an ROI, return on investment. And we continually talk about this as being an asset. Well, it's a leased parcel of land, and the funding is all coming, you know, from the state anyways to build it. But we lease it. We don't own it. It's not, in my opinion, a town asset. 46 years in a career of finance, corporate finance. Went through a B.C. undergrad, Babson MBA, 25 years as chief financial officer, and I've never seen a return on investment decision made the way FINCOM seemed to have made that decision. That money is a sunk cost. It's a cost to the taxpayers of this town. We won't see it again. It's gone. Yeah, we'll free up the funding. I get it. But it's not a return on investment. If you came to me and said, "We're investing in Market Street," well, there's property taxes that are coming back. That's a return on investment. We're getting tax money back. And when I think about $348,000, I think, so I said to my wife, "Let's get the superintendent's schools down here and ask her what she can do with $348,000." She said in a recent article that the potential over the next two years is for increasing enrollment. I think 100 plus more students. That means more teachers, expanded capacity in our classrooms. I mean, as it is, there are capital projects that we need there on our own. The greatest asset this town has is its schools. And when I think about when people make decisions about buying a home, there are two things primarily, I think, we think about. One is location, and two is school systems, the quality of education in the schools. If we're going to be spending $348,000, I'd rather spend it on the schools. Get the superintendent down here. Get the chief of police, the chief of fire. And say, "If we got $348,000, what would you do with that money?" I'm sure they have plenty of responses for it. Anyways, so I object, you know, to the spending, and hopefully you'll take that into consideration.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak? Sure. I'll bring him.
Hi. My name is Mark Preston from 19 Tricket Road. First of all, I want to thank you all for being here tonight. I recognize many of you from town from many different aspects of the community, and I know that we are all highly involved in making this place a better community. In terms of $300,000, I want to put that number in context. Last time we had a special town meeting, we voted over Center Farm, and it passed overwhelmingly. And the town bought it for about $1.2 million. The town put out RFPs, invited the community to come together with ideas that we could use this building, use this asset, but the ideas just weren't there. And for years, it was carried at a cost to the town. And ultimately, a family stepped forward and said, "We'd like to buy it. We'd like to invest in this community and keep this treasured asset." And they bought it at roughly a cost of $900,000, a loss to the town of $300,000. That $300,000 investment, we as a town absorbed, taxpayers absorbed, but it ultimately went to the benefit of one family. We, as a Friends organization, are asking you to make a similar investment today, $300,000 in a $16 million asset that the entire community can benefit from for years and years to come. So with that, Selectmen, I ask you to vote in favor of this article. And if you have any questions, we welcome your questions and feedback. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford, for doing it this way and not allowing a previous speaker to be fielding all the questions instead of the Selectmen. I urge you not to recommend this article. The truth of the issue is now beginning to come to light how little we know about the costs of the rail trail. I've been doing this for 15 years. I would love to see it put to rest. I've been studying it. And I also, as you know, study the budget with you. It's a very extensive process. The donations promised by the Friends apparently aren't there to defray the costs. Here they are, asking to take $348,000 out of the budget approved by town meeting in April, which took effect July 1st, just July 1st. And here it is, September. We have until June 30th before the fiscal year is finished. Are we sure that we're not going to need the $348,000 which they are asking us to have transferred out of the budget we just passed at April town meeting? Can you say we will not need that money? $348,000 does not include the cost of the special meeting, which was addressed before, $7,000 apparently. That's a lovely surprise for all of us. Many recognize the inadequacy of caring for our infrastructure. We're catching up, but we have roads and streets and library and school repairs. Do we really want it to go for something that is a want, not a need? Many recognize... Let's see. The FINCOM has warned about future lack of funds in form of an override in a letter to the town meeting. The Street Tragic Planning Committee is discussing public safety buildings, which are not in that great a shape, apparently. They've been around for quite a while. They're talking about the new library, of course, which has been on our plate for a while. We're talking about lack of adequate space in the schools. The cost to address these needs will be millions in new debt. In March of 2018, I made a list for you and for FINCOM of needs that we would... What we would need to pay for for the rail trail to be put in. I asked FINCOM the other night four questions about the costs. I had submitted to them the same letter. They could not answer the questions about cost. But they still voted 8 to 2 to support the request for $348,000. Hopefully, the voters on September 26th will care about the future unknown costs. I suggest that the Friends get donations for this cost from their supporters and leave the town budget and our taxes alone. Please do not believe the spin that you've been fed on costs. Demand real cost analysis. Demand real cost analysis, and don't recommend this article. Only proponents were allowed on the committee. You may not even realize that, but people that wanted to be on the committee, that would have had a broader view and would have brought up legitimate questions and demanded legitimate answers, were not allowed on the rail trail committee and the committee that had another name before it.
The recreational path committee, is that the one you're talking about?
Yeah, recreational path committee, and there was another committee with another name before that, and before that, before that, for the last fifteen years. Thank you for allowing me to address this.
Thank you, Mrs. Campbell. Gentlemen first. Vince, I'm gonna let everybody speak once, and then we're gonna, we're gonna speak. Okay.
Good evening, my name is Peter Perlmutter, I'm on Thomas Road for many years. Gentlemen mentioned the votes, votes that have been on the rail trail in two thousand seventeen at town meeting, whether it was a slim vote or a big vote, it was a victory for the, in favor of the rail trail. In two thousand nineteen, it was a five percent victory, majority victory for the rail trail. I'll only suggest in terms of the vote, if you gentlemen were elected by five points, you would be thrilled, as were the people, proponents of the rail trail. I would suggest you take that into deliberations in favor of the rail trail. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Noble? Jill, we'll take you after him. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Keith Noble, Two Todd Lane. So I wanted to make one point that we seem to be missing a little bit here today, it's been, sure, thank you, that we seem to be missing here today, and yes, the financial part is very important, but the health of our town is very important. This is far beyond a want. There is a want out there, but there is a need. We've all heard, if you build it, they will come. If you build a rail trail, you give individuals of this town a place to go and keep themselves much more healthy. It's true, and over a hundred and towns in this Commonwealth have rail trails that are currently functioning. People enjoy the rail trails, people who live near the rail trail find they use it far more than they thought they would. Is a great need in our country to be able to make yourself and keep yourself healthier, and recreation is a huge part of that. As I tell every one of my patients, if you want to have a healthy second half of your life, if you don't exercise, you're not going to be there. You need to keep yourself healthy and in good shape to do that, and a rail trail is one way that enables residents of our town to do that. The second question I had was more for a town administrator, is I believe that you had found there were some funds that were identified within our current budget, and if you could just elaborate on that for the group, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
The two funds that would be identified, that we have identified in preparation for this question would be the sale of real estate, which is a fund that has been established in town, in which parcels of land that were sold by the town are put into this fund for the following uses. It's one-time use for items that might otherwise have been bonded or borrowed for, or capital projects, and some monies within that fund to improve the golf course, since one of the, some of the monies coming in were from the sale of the original front nine.
Life project.
Life project. In that fund, there's two million dollars approximately. The second is the overlay account. The overlay account is established under master general law to protect the town from tax abatements. Smartly, the board of selectmen and the board of assessors have been investing in this account due to action taken by national development that went before the state appellate tax board, that they claimed that they were overtaxed for a long period of time. Town needed to protect themselves in case the appellate tax board ruled in favor of national development. Last year, the board of assessors and the board of selectmen agreed to a very fair settlement in the town's interest. So in that account is one million forty thousand two hundred sixty-four dollars. Both of these accounts are for one-time use, I think for use for anything, but the sound fiscal policy would be to use one-time money for one-time expenses. Those are the two areas that we would look at now or in the future for projects such as this.
Thank you. Jill?
Jill, Juliana, good evening, thank you for doing it the way you did, I agree with Pat, this was a very good idea to listen to everyone speak. First of all, what I want to say is, with due respect to the gentleman who spoke, exercise is not an infrastructure, is a choice. I've been exercising all my life, I lived forty-one years in Linfield, and I exercise every day, so please take that in mind. Besides that, please, even if you want to be selfish, you want to invest in your schools, your municipal building, your streets, your sidewalks, and not in a rails-to-trail, because even if you want to be selfish, you want your property value to go up. And what brings your value property up is your schools, is your municipal buildings, your police station, your fire station, that's what brings your value, your property value up. This is why, and I think, I see, I meet a lot of young people moving in town with children, and the reason why they move to Linfield primarily is for the schools. There we are, we have over one hundred-plus children enrolled in Linfield, and guess what, that'll create another classroom and a cobere, but we don't have the money. I mean, chin trembly, like they all said, I don't want to reiterate what they've already explained, and you guys are aware of this, there's money in this fund, it will, it's not enough for what we need. We need so much money for the town repairs, maintenance schools, that we're gonna have to waste it on such a frivolous, what they call asset, I was gonna say, rails-to-trail, when we have so many more critical needs? And I'm just gonna quote a couple of people, we were, I was on one of the finance committee, and you do know David Bazil, and he is on the strategic committee. He was not sure, but he was saying that they've been researching all the repairs, the building, the street sidewalk, whatever it is, and he is proposing, or at least is projecting that it will be a fifty million dollars override. So I don't know, he said not to quote him, because they're not sure, just at the very beginning, but they're looking at all of this. So the money that Mr. Dolan spoke up, can it be the Linfields cannot use that money for the schools and everything else we have to use for the rails-to-trail, when these people, the proponents of the rails-to-trail, many times I've said, and have many articles that I brought with, that I had, that they said, we will raise money, we will fundraise, we'll get volunteers to maintain the rails-to-trail. Guess what? They have not, obviously, they did not raise the money for this, they did not raise the money for the fundraising, nobody's contributed money, and I guarantee you, nobody is gonna volunteer to maintain the rails-to-trail, it's a novelty. So please, I am almost positive that we can use that money, that money was appropriated for our town municipal buildings and schools, not for the rails-to-trail. And therefore, I will, please, I beg, I urge you not to recommend this, but I also, I also have another question. On the question itself that they proposed, I do not, I don't, I'm not sure I understand this, but the last paragraph, where it says, and for the purposes of any other cost associated with the Wakefield-Linfield rails-to-trail project, what does that mean? I guess what I am saying is, the way I'm reading this, they're coming up for three hundred forty-eight thousand dollars, because they want to finish this design, plus five hundred thousand to stay, plus a hundred thousand from the conservation, right? Does that mean that they take on and pass three hundred forty-eight thousand, does that mean they can come back for more money after this and get more money? Of course they can, if they came back now, they can come back again, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So then, what, how are we guaranteed, how do we know? I mean, already now, the numbers don't add up. And then, Mr. Curly, with due respect, he said, well, guess what, when you gotta get five hundred thousand, it's hard to get. So how do we know that the money from the city we will get, when it's been pushed up over and over again, it's been pushed up again to two thousand twenty-four, and a million may be pushed up again? So how are we guaranteed? If he's saying we're not guaranteed the five hundred thousand for this grant earmarked by Brad Jones, does that mean that we will be guaranteed this money, the eleven million dollars, that they're supposed to be building this? Supposedly, it is guaranteed, right, according to them? So I urge you, please, not to recommend this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Stephen Fantone, I reside at three forty Summer Street. I come to very few of these meetings, because I keep a rather low profile in town, but I've lived in this town with my wife for thirty-two years. When our children came to town, we ended up putting them in private schools. I didn't come out and say, hey, I don't care what's going on in the public schools, I'm paying a lot in taxes. I recognize that to have a full, rich community, we have to have a diversity of offerings for people. I'm at a stage in my life now, my children have graduated from schools, they've graduated from college, they're all in their thirties. When we came in nineteen eighty-seven, there was talk of a rail trail, that whole came and went. I'm not largely likely to be a personal beneficiary of a rail trail, I'm sure if we have it, I'll walk on it, but I do think it enriches the town. And for a person that, you know, I kept my kids twenty years out of total Linfield schools, if I were to annualize that cost, it would have been close to three hundred thousand dollars. I saved the town three hundred thousand dollars by not putting my kids in the public schools here. What do you do for me? I pay my taxes, I want to have really good public schools. A comment was made earlier about the vote at the first rail trail, three forty-two to three forty-one. Everyone talks about democracy. That vote occurred at eleven o'clock at night. Who wasn't able to vote? Mothers with children, people who have a vested interest in an asset like this. Senior citizens can stay up as late as they want.
Folks, just, just, just let him speak, please, thank you. Thank you.
I didn't intend to spark such controversy. The other part is the election itself, and people complaining about the cost of it. I have a right to have that election. That is due me under the rules that have been longstanding for a long time, I do not want to be denied those rights. It's a dollar seventy-five per household. Mrs. Campbell, if you can't afford it, I'll give you two bucks, okay? And that'll cover your contribution.
No need to be nasty, I think you would agree with that, Mr. Crawford.
Well, let's not name names, okay?
Well, all I can tell you is this, this is an asset that's worth happening, having. When I look at towns that I would live in if I didn't live here, every one of them has a rail trail. I'm afraid that the end of my life is gonna come, and I'm gonna find that this is a town that doesn't have a vision of the future for itself, a vision for its children, a vision for those that are entering the last third of their lives, and I think this is something that we want to enjoy. There are a lot of assets in town I don't take, make use of. I don't use the library. Why I have a library at work, I have the internet, I have books that I buy, but I still pay for a library, because I see it has value to others. This is an asset that has value to others, and it would be selfish to deny the town this asset, and I ask that you support this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak that hasn't spoken, please?
Jill Jorgensen, Three Missouri Lane. Well, first of all, I just wanted to say that there's a chance that we may not be able to pass the environmental stage of Reedie Meadow. I mean, we have the local, we have the state, and maybe even the federal, it's a national natural historic site and preserve, I should say. And there's a chance that that money might just go right down the tubes. We do all of this work, and then it doesn't get approved, there's that chance. Also, this trail is unlike any other trail. It has a six-tenths of a mile boardwalk, which is the length from summer school, Summer Street School, all the way to the center stores, which is an enormous distance, and it goes right onto Route ninety-five. I mean, it's going to be this red flag saying, you know, I'm a tourist attraction here, come on into town, less than a mile, there's a great parking lot at the middle school, and, you know, come use, come on into town. So we're gonna be flooded with people coming into town, that's my prediction. It's very accessible, it's very high visibility, and I think we're gonna be flooded with people. And I believe that the middle school, which is already one of their games, it's, the parking lot is already full, people are gonna want to come to see their kids' games, and the parking lot's gonna be full. And then you're gonna have overflow parking on all of the side streets, which really annoys a lot of people. But, what else did I want to say? So it may be, no, this might be all a waste of time with the environmental, and I think it would be a detriment to have, I mean, the, that senior housing was denied mainly because people didn't want any more traffic in town. And now they're not only inviting more people into town, they're telling them, come on and park in all of our parking spots, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jill. Yes, sir, right. Vince, I'm gonna let everybody speak once, please, thank you.
I wasn't prepared for this. My name is Frank Suriel, and I thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you. I moved to Linfield about fifty years ago, not thirty-four. When I moved here, there were no traffic lights. Later on, there happened to be one over on one twenty-nine. Other than that, this was a nice town, it was quiet. I moved my family here, to tell you the truth, I was living in Kansas, I was in the army, and I wanted to leave them, I had to go to Vietnam, so I had wanted to leave them in a safe place. My mother-in-law was superintendent nurses at the soldiers' home, I had her retire, I bought a house on Chestnut, on Long Street, and I went away for a year, came back for six months, and went back again, and I left my family here. It was safe, it was quiet, it was peaceful, no traffic lights, the kids could walk up and down the street and not worry about it. I think we're getting to the point in life where we want to make changes for change's sake, and that's kind of stupid. Spending money that's not necessary is also stupid. And I'm not, I'm not trying to tell you what to do, and that this is up to you, but I'm giving you my view. My personal view is that all these things are emotional, they're unnecessary in many cases, we've got streets that are quiet, bicycles can go up and down, I use my bicycle up and down the street, and I'm not worried about being run over, and I don't even know where I am half the time. So I would suggest that, with good common sense would dictate, that we're wasting money on this thing. And it's not because we don't want to have diversity, which in itself is a big question mark, it's other things too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, appreciate it. Just, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Debbie LaQuanti, I'm Perry Ave, hi, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. I really am not prepared, but I just wanted to remind everyone out in the audience, everyone at home, about our resources that we already have. You've heard me say this before, I'm just gonna bring it to the forefront again. We have beautiful playgrounds, we've worked hard on them, we're continuing to develop them, and they're beautiful areas. Our high school and our middle schools are state-of-the-art right now. We also have, besides the middle school, the high school, Summer Street School, beautiful area, you can run around there all you want. Huckleberry Hill, Rira the Senior Center, Glen Meadow Park, Freeman Park, the Town Common, Jordan Park, New Hall Park, we have three golf courses. We also have Pine Ridge, Patrick's Trail, we have Beaver Dam, Bow Ridge, Bennett Keenan, I think that might be all of them, but I mean, we have resources that are already here. Guess what, they don't cost us anything. Why aren't we using those? We don't need a rail trail. We have all these resources, so please reconsider. We have all these resources, so please reconsider this. And again, everyone said it, if they ask us for $348,000 now, what will be next month? Six months? One year? It's going to keep going. It's the tip of the iceberg. And I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Debbie. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Who's that? Kevin?
Yes.
Sure, come on. How are we doing?
So Kevin Sullivan, 96 Main Street. I'm also on the Finance Committee. So first of all, I want to make it clear that I'm not speaking on behalf of the Finance Committee. I'm not their spokesman. But I do want to tell you what transpired at the Finance Committee meeting and why the committee, by a vote of 80%, voted to recommend the article. We would love to get all-state funding and not have the town have to pay anything. But based on conversations that we've had with both Rob and Phil, and conversations that you've had with our legislators, it sounds like it's very unlikely that we'll get funding. You know, there's a chance we could get $250,000 next year. There's a chance we could get $125,000 next year. There's a chance we get nothing next year. There's a chance we get nothing three, four, or five years from now. In the meantime, we've lost, we would have lost the DCR grant. We would have lost three or four years. We also looked at it as the town is making an investment of 3% to gain a $10.3 million asset. So those are the reasons why the Finance Committee voted to recommend it. And also, from a personal note, my wife and I moved to Linfield 22 years ago. There was talk of a rail trail back then. So a lot of generations have come and gone and haven't had a rail trail. I was also on the Fields Committee. And even though my kids haven't gotten to enjoy the fields, my feeling was, why wait? Why let another generation play on crappy fields? And I feel the same way about the rail trail. So I urge you to recommend in favor of the rail trail article. As I said, it's 3% investment on a $10.3 million asset. The promise of state funding is very, very uncertain. We could get nothing, we could lose the $100,000 DCR grant. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Ms. Chellman?
So Axel Worth, 31 Walnut Street, and I am a supporter. I say that upfront. I want to make three points. One is, there were concerns raised tonight and at previous events about safety, construction, environmental. In my opinion, the only way to get answers on those questions is to finish the design. Therefore, I think the town should proceed with the design so that we get those answers. Right? First one. Second point, and that's a very personal point, is tonight and also at previous events, the argument was made that the rail trail will bring outsiders into town. I was told a few years ago by a fellow Linfield resident to go back to where I came from, and I don't even have brown skin. I would caution the town to follow this argument. Let's be an open community. Let's welcome people from the outside. Third point, which was made tonight and also previously, is questions about the objectivity of the FINCOM Committee, of the Recreational Path Committee, so forth. I do want to raise also the question about the objectivity of the opponents of the rail trail, because most of them are not only abutters, but they're also, I suspect in some cases, will have future issues with building code violations, as in setbacks, and potentially even property tax evasion, as some of them may have expanded their lot onto the rail trail property. Just want to point that out. And again, the point is, we only get those answers if we finish the design phase. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else that hasn't spoken would like to speak? Okay, Vince, you're up.
Thank you for the second opportunity and for the agenda. I just want to emphasize again what we believe is the importance of using the key boards in town to help guide you, help make this very important decision. Again, one that we think is one of the best value-added opportunities in decades with roughly about a 3% to 3.5% investment. And Mr. Samantino, it is an investment, okay? Health and wellness is everybody's key...
Vince, don't single out people, okay? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. It's everybody's key source of wealth. But the key boards, the recreational path that you appointed, again, we believe did an outstanding job. We think that it makes sense for you to take heed of that vote for them in advancing this project. FINCOM, again, and Planning Board, these are three boards that you rely on for decisions. And we feel very strongly that you should go move forward and endorse this warrant article. So thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Vince. Do you want to talk, Brian? Sure. Sure, why not? Yeah. Why should you be left out?
Got a new act. I'm working on it.
There you go.
Hello, everyone. I'm Brian Hutter, 24 Canterbury Road. I've been in town three and a half years. Before that, I lived in Arlington, close to the Elway Greenway Bike Path. It's an extension off the Minuteman Bike Path. So I just wanted to add two cents, because for most people, living near a rail trail is hypothetical. And I actually live two-tenths of a mile from a rail trail with an elevated boardwalk through a kind of marshy area. And, I mean, I used it a lot as a runner. But then, when we had our second kid, and I needed a place to take my first kid, that bike path was, you know, an oasis, was a sanctuary for my family. When my wife was home with the youngest and trying to get her to sleep, I could take our hyperactive two-year-old, walk to the bike path and walk on that trail, experience nature, see neighbors. My two-year-old could pet everyone's dog. And it was great. And this is a beautiful resource. And you know what, Jill? It's, oh, sorry, I shouldn't mention anyone's names. Anonymous people in the audience, you know, it's not overcrowded. You know, in the morning, there's people walking their dogs. In the evening, there's people commuting home. And, you know, why is it when you say it's so wonderful? Well, it's the people in that neighborhood who use it. Because there are so many towns with their own little oasis. You know, no one in Stonem is going to drive here when they've got the tri-community. No one in PBD is going to drive here when they have the Independence. Right now, I run to PBD, and I run on the Independence, but I'm crazy, and I run 10 miles. And it's great. But you go there on a Saturday morning, and I'm on that for an hour, and I count, you know, 30 people, but it's 15 people I'm seeing twice because I run up and I run down, and they're just walking with their dogs. But, so anyway, yeah. For a lot of people, it's this kind of perceived fear, and it's imaginary because they haven't experienced it. And I actually lived near one. And in terms of property values, when we sold it, it was prominently on the listing, access to the bike path. This is something that is a desired asset in many communities. I know there's a lot of fears. I know it's something new. And, you know, we're a democracy, so we're going to vote. You know, if people say, if it was so great, why did you move? I wanted, you know, more space for my growing family. If I knew something like a bike path was so controversial, maybe I would have picked another town. But, you know, we are happy to be here. It's a great town. And, you know, this is democracy. We're all here making it happen. You know, obviously, whatever happens tonight, we'll probably have 10 more votes in the next five years, and we'll all get to see each other and shake hands. My kids will graduate. My kids are always like, Dad, are they building it tomorrow? And I'm like, no, no, no. Adults take a long time to decide things, so. Anyway, thanks for having me.
Thanks, Brian.
That was our closing act.
He has been working on his act. He has been working on his act, yeah. He wasn't kidding.
I'll be here all week.
Okay, Pat, you'll be the last speaker. Thank you, Pat. Thank you, Brian.
Two quick points. I just want to echo the concern raised by another speaker. There was a suggestion earlier tonight that the Recreational Path Committee was impartial, that you, the selectman, had appointed impartial people to this committee. And I find that personally offensive. And I'm concerned, I don't think there's any Recreational Path Committee members in the audience tonight. But for those members who may be at home, or their friends or family watching at home, I find it really disrespectful to make that allegation, because I know I've attended some of their meetings. They have been nothing but impartial, transparent, committed to process. And when you look at their materials, everything of which has been documented to the most finite degree and posted on the town's website, it's extraordinary, because they don't make summary statements, as you well know, they've presented to you many times. They source all of their statements. So they source who they spoke to. Here they are talking about maintenance costs. They verified them with the town engineer and with insurance providers and with the Mass DOT. This is just one example. So I encourage the Board of Selectmen to revisit the many, many reports. I just printed a few of them tonight. It's extraordinary the amount of time that these impartial, independent folks from our town who volunteered their time, put into this project. And their findings are striking. All of the no issues you've heard tonight have been addressed in great detail in the findings of the Recreational Path Committee. The second thing I'll leave you with is just that someday, when we have this trail, and we will have this trail in Linfield, those properties, residences that abut this trail, someday someone will go to sell their home. You can be assured that the very first statement in the listing, the MLS sale listing for those properties, is going to be in all capital letters right next to the rail trail, because it'll be the number-one selling point for those homes, just as it is in every other town that has a rail trail in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So I thank you, and I, again, hope that you'll endorse the article.
Thank you, Pat. Thank you. So I'm going to end the speakers, because I think everybody did a great job. I appreciate everybody coming up. It was more of a mandate or a discussion on whether we want a rail trail or not, and that's not what we're here really to discuss. We're here to discuss whether or not we want to endorse an article that's appropriating $348,000. We've gone through the process of whether or not the town wants a rail trail. The reason we did a ballot question at the election is to allow the largest amount of voters to come down and vote. I mean, a prior speaker had mentioned, who can go to a town meeting? Well, it is difficult for people to get to a town meeting, especially young families with kids. You know, whoever can't make it can make it in a seven-to-seven voting period during the day. So that's why we did a ballot. The ballot did, you know, what we thought it would do. It would tell us what the town wants to do with 3,400 or 3,500 votes. It was a nice turnout. There was 180 votes on the yes side. Immediately, even that evening, while the vote came in, Brad Jones was texting me, saying, what's the vote? Because he was ready to go to the state and ask for the $500,000 to get put in that environmental bill and be approved. So that's what we were working on. No one was waiting for anything else to happen, because we wanted to get the town to tell us that we should move forward in this. And the state would not go forward with the funding unless they got a yes vote from the town. So this is the process that we're going through, and that's why we did it the way we did it. So to continue that piece, we have a $500,000 environmental bill. It's a five-year bill. We know that. Not everything gets funded in that bill. But the important piece there is, the first year things get funded are the priority items, those have already been funded. The second year, we've already met with Mass DOT. We have a legislative process going through. Our state rep, our senators, they have gone to the governor. They've made this a priority in the second year. The Mass DOT wants this project. Our town administrator, Wakefield Town Administrator, have met with the Mass DOT within the last month, and they want this project to be funded and move forward. This is one piece of a much bigger project they're trying to get done. So funding is going to get done, most likely, next year. I can't guarantee it, but we wanted to see this process go through. There's a $500,000 allotment within the environmental bill. It says an amount not less than $500 should be put towards the rail trail. I tried to qualify that with the state. They said they can still give you less. So the discussion we had with the state is, they could give you up to $500,000. They may say, we want you to have some skin in the game. So it might be 250, 300, 400, you don't know. You don't know. But we've been told that this money will most likely be in the next funding round. So I thought, for a town the size of ours, with the amount of funds that we have, it would be much more prudent for the town to wait to see if that funding comes in at the end of this year. And I understand the friends of the rail trail, and they want to move forward, and they want to just fund it and go with this. But they can reapply for the $100,000 grant. They'll most likely get it, because it's a type of grant where, now that you're ready and you have your funding in place, you can get that grant. Because there's two separate funding sources for the state environmental bill and that grant. So at the end of the day, even if we got $250,000, okay, it's a big difference in spending this money now. Because right now, they get $348,000 they're asking for in this warrant article. That would pay 250 on top of the 100 they have would pay the design costs. That would leave $100,000 for any additional costs that we have, which would be the insurance, any rights of way, any land takings that we'd have to do, anything along the way that would cost money. You know, Wakefield has the same issue. You have to get a right of way to go across the street. So that's a legal process, and it does cost money to go through that. So that's what that money's for. I feel it'd be much more prudent for someone that has to manage a $55 million budget and look out for everything that's going on in town, to see what we get from the state. And at that point, we'll know exactly how much we'd have to raise. And that's why I would feel much better knowing what that number is at the end of this year. So right now, I am not ready to recommend this. Even though we're going to go forward with the town meeting and vote on it, I still think it'd be more prudent and financially prudent to move forward on it in a year from now when we know what we get from the state. Dick?
Just before I make my comments following up on yours, I'd like to agree with Attorney Curley with respect to the Recreational Path Committee. I think that what I don't like lots of times in these discussions are casting aspersions upon people who gave a lot of time over the last couple of years and I think did a remarkable job. And, you know, obviously, there were times when the proponents weren't happy with them, there were times when the opponents weren't happy with them. And that's sort of the price you pay when you volunteer for, you know, putting yourself into the middle of a controversial issue. So I would hope that people would respect the many hours that they put in on this. I would say this, Mr. Chairman. I agree with your analysis completely. I think, quite frankly, it's the only reasonable conclusion that one can come to if you're going to be impartial in looking at this. And part of it is driven by one factor that you didn't quite address, and that is, I don't see the sense of urgency where this is now slotted for 2024. I think the argument that, you know, everything needs to be done right now falls short. But, you know, not to be, you know, to repeat many of the points that you did, I do agree with you. I think the prudent thing to do is to wait and see. I think, quite frankly, if you look at, you know, this situation, the governor has been very supportive, whether some people like that and other people do like it, of the whole rail trail concept, all right? So you have a governor that's in favor of it. He's a Republican. Our state representative happens to be the minority leader, all right? So, I mean, I think our chances of getting funding are a lot better than what some people would say on that bond bill. I think that we stand a very good chance of getting the funding from that. So anyways, with that, I, too, am not prepared to recommend this for our recommendation to town meeting.
Well, then, we can... Do the options have a motion not to recommend or a motion to indefinitely postpone? You can have either one of those.
My inkling would be, I would offer a motion that we not recommend.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Then aye. So, and that's... So, and that's not saying that...
Anything other than we don't think this process is the proper process at this time. It's still going to go to town meeting.
It's still going to go to town meeting and move forward. It's just, there's an impatience here that I don't really understand other than we talked about this $100,000 grant, which can get reapplied for. So we're not going to lose it. And we have a good idea in a year's time on really what we'd have to fund to move forward on the project. And that's what we're trying to do, based on the ballot vote. So I thank everybody for coming tonight and I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session, if that is appropriate at this time.
I would second that.
Do we have to do a roll call vote? Selectman Dalton?
Yes.
Selectman Barrett?
Yes.
And I say yes. So we're going to be entering executive session. So if we could quietly clear the room, I appreciate it. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, will we be reconvening after the executive session?
We will not be reconvening after the second session.